So, welcome everyone to the Easter Ross Committee. And please note that this meeting will be recorded and subsequent archiving for the public access via the council's internet site. If any member loses connection or has any technical issues during the meeting, you have the details of the ICT office that you can get in touch with. Or you can put it into the chat and Fiona can arrange for somebody to be in touch. Can members please ensure that they've activated their cameras and muted their microphones? And it's essential to continue to use both throughout the meeting. And if any member's got a question or a discussion on an item, can you please use the electronic hand? And at the bottom of the screen and all your requests will be monitored and you'll be invited to speak at the appropriate time. And that also applies to declarations of interest, which we'll take in the next few minutes if you can just indicate that by using the hand. If you've made a non-financial declaration or any other declaration where you would normally not normally leave the chamber, then you can leave your camera on and not take part or take part in line with your declaration. And the conversation line can be activated by clicking once on the conversation, which you'll see at the taskbar at the bottom of your screen. And this will have the effect of displaying the conversation in the right-hand margin of the screen. Finally, if we need to adjourn the meeting for any reason, you'll be required to disconnect from the meeting at the point of the adjournment. And a time will be given for the meeting to recommence and then you just need to join again as normal. And this will ensure that everyone is aware of the restart time, including those. Well, normally it would be those who are watching the webcast, but we're not webcast, we're just recorded. So if I move to Fiona to take a roll call of those that are attending, please. Morning, members. I'll just call your names. I'm councillor Robertson here.
Here.
And councillor Ryan.
Here.
Councillor Loudon.
Present.
Councillor Smith.
Yes, here.
Councillor Finlayson. Mike, you're on mute. I can see, I can see you're here.
I'm here. Sorry.
Councillor Munro.
Yeah.
Councillor Wilson. Not sure she's here yet.
She's not here yet, but she is coming.
It's coming, yeah.
I believe she's trying to, I believe she's trying to join just now.
Okay. I'll keep an eye out for her arriving. Sorry, that wasn't in the usual order. I had written it out. Okay, I think that's.
Morning.
Morning Caroline.
Sorry, I had the link last night. All set up and this morning I can't find it anywhere. So thank you Alison.
Okay, so we don't have any apologies for absence then. Okay, so moving on to item number two on the agenda, which is declarations of interest. And I'll go first. I have an interest in agenda item three, which is the town centre fund. As I'm a member of one of the project applicant groups, Tain Taskforce. And they are related to the Tain Rose Garden and Tain Toilets project. I've applied the objective test and concluded that I'll remain as part of the meeting. But I'll not participate any discussion of that particular project. And if it comes to a vote, I'll relinquish the chair and hand over to my vice chair, who is Alistair Ryan. Okay, so next we have Derek Loudon.
Thanks Fiona. I've submitted a, my, my connection to Alison, you know, so I'm, I'm involved with the Tain Picture House Restoration Project. And I consider that that's a financial interest. Because we've been a recipient of the previous round of funds. And we're also a recipient, well, we're an applicant in this round of funds. So I'll be not taking part in this item. Other than to provide any clarification that members may, may ask for. But I'll be switching my camera off and switching the microphone off. And I won't participate in, in the debate and on the project in any way.
Okay, thank you Derek. Alistair Ryan.
Yeah, well, similar to you Fiona, although I don't necessarily agree that I need to make a declaration of interest. I'm on the task force. It's a non-financial organisation as far as I'm concerned. I don't receive any benefit from it whatsoever. And so I find it quite hard that I have to declare an interest in something that, you know, I was actually, I'm on in my community role in this community. So I find it quite, quite hard to understand the factor of it. Maybe someone can guide me on that.
Okay. Do we have any other declarations of interest? No? Okay, so I'll move on to item number three, which is the town centre fund. And we've got Alan Webster here, who can talk you through all the expressions of interest that we have had in for both wards. I think it's, at this point, I should refer back to the discussions that we have had as joint wards together that make up the committee about how we would distribute this funding across the wards. And there is an agreement that we've made to split the funding fifty fifty in each ward, which would give us around seventy thousand pounds for each ward. And we've agreed that every member unanimously, that that's the way we would go forward with the funding. So that's what we will bear in mind when Alan goes through the different projects and talks us through them. Okay, is everyone still in agreement with that? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, agreed.
Thanks Maxine. Okay, so I'll move over to you Alan. And if you could talk us through the paper that you've got in front of us. Thank you.
We do. Thank you Chair and good morning members. As I've done in other area committees, I don't propose to read through all the background to the town centre fund, the names and objectives. As the Chair just indicated, we have had briefing sessions, attended board business meetings, et cetera, late last year. So I think everybody's quite comfortable with what the fund is seeking to achieve. However, I will stress a couple of key points, just to refresh you, just to remind you that the allocation for this committee area is a hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and sixty pounds. The eligible settlements for investment are the same as before, and those are Alnes, Everton, Invergordon, Ballintor and Tain. The grant terms this time round are a little bit more flexible than previously. The town centre still remains a key focus. At this time round, the key emphasis is on the construction sector. Basically injecting the money into local economies to support the construction sector, as I say. It forms part of the Scottish Government's National Economic Stimulus Package. And therefore there's a very tight timetable with investing sums of money. Contracts need to be awarded by the end of March or later by the end of March. And the funds need to be spent by the end of September. When we discussed that late last year, that timetable was one of the key driving factors in determining how you wish to proceed. The decision and the wish of members late last year was to prioritise existing TCF projects that may have additional phases they would like to add, or where perhaps experiencing a projected overspend. Members asked council officers to go and investigate that. Essentially the body of the report is the outcome of that exercise. So I'd like to move to section six just now, which is the individual proposals themselves. So the first one is quite a short discussion description in there, that the detail of all the individual project proposals are appended where they exist. So the first project is the Tain Picture House. An established project, a beneficiary in the nineteen twenty round of funding. So the principle of support this project has been established, as I say. And the items that the Tain District Heritage Trust are looking for TCF support for are a lift, an elevator at the cost of thirty six thousand and a ramp at four thousand pounds. Essentially, this is seen as being critical to sustainability and usability of the property. We'd all agree that DDA compliance would be a key component of the reuse of this property. So that's what the project lead is seeking funds for. It's basically the second phase of a much bigger aspiration for that property and essentially moves it further down the line. You will note in the next paragraph, six point one point one, I do indicate a slight concern about deliverability. And as far as the statutory consent hadn't been obtained, but you will have seen the letter of comfort that circulated yesterday, late on, from the case officer handling the applications. I do say that I was quite optimistic that everything would be resolved in time. And the letter of comfort basically backs that up. So I see no issues with that. Quotations have been obtained by the project lead. They appear to be in budget. So I have absolutely no concerns with deliverability on that project or any eligibility concerns. The next project would be the Rose Garden in Tain. Now again, this is one I'm sure members are all familiar with. An established local priority. It's a joint project between the council and the Tain Taskforce. There are a number of work packages within the bid. The first being the provision of new surfacing of the Rose Garden paths at a cost of forty five thousand, three hundred. There is a desire to install lighting and power for the community markets in the garden at a cost of eight thousand pounds. Again, I said for updates would be given, circulated these costs last night, just to reiterate those. There was a desire to install a stretch marquee. The Tain Taskforce are no longer seeking funds for that, so that has been removed from consideration. And the other component is the refurbishment of the public toilets. The toilets have been subject to vandalism, so the aspiration is to install a more vandal proof facility with steel fitness and more robust locking mechanisms and generally refresh the premises. That includes CCTV and improved external lighting to the property. That is estimated at thirty two thousand pounds. Again, I have no issues with eligibility or deliverability with this project. The next one is Shore Road and Inver Gordon. A project, again, I think we're all very familiar with. It was submitted last time round for the nineteen twenty funding round of town centre fund. Regrettably, at that time, we were massively oversubscribed with projects, I'm sure members will remember. And at that time, this one did not receive support, but an opportunity has now arisen where it can be supported. Essentially, it's a Highland Council led project. This is part of the project. The authority are always, are also involved with a pedestrian crossing element of the project. So there is an accuracy in the report that refers to the performance and governance service leading the project. That's not the case. It's place in communities. So just to clarify that. And the request is for fifty thousand pounds. Essentially, it's to install two laybys that will help a traffic management issue that exists in the location. With obviously the cruise sector, there is a massive issue with coaches in that vicinity. So this project seeks to address that. Benefit the visitor experience in terms of those arriving and disembarking. But also will benefit the community who are inconvenienced by the disruption that is experienced in this area. So it involves the laybys, signage as well, and obviously appropriate lighting in that area. So that has been posted. It's well developed. No issues with deliverability or eligibility on that one. And the fourth and final proposal, I do not have the full details of this. They haven't been appended. Something that's come in quite late in the day. It's essentially to install approved street lighting in Everton on Southern Entrance. It's a council-led project. And whilst I don't have the full proposal template appended to the document, there has been some preliminary work done on this. The budget estimate for the project is between ten and fifteen thousand pounds. As I said in my email late on yesterday, I think it would be prudent to adopt the higher level figure. So as not to sell the project short and incur any deliverability issues. I am assured that the project is deliverable within, within the timeframe. I know the lead service is hoping to carry a site visit very shortly. Carry the appropriate analysis to develop this, this project very, very quickly and firm up the costs for members' consideration. So essentially that concludes all I have to say on the individual projects. More than happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you Alan. I have councillor Smith with her hand up.
Yeah, I just want to explain for anybody on the recording that might listen, why I haven't declared an interest on the Shore Road layby Fiona. I think it's important. Obviously, if I'd had a financial interest with vessel excursions trading, I would have declared it for the Shore Road project. And because we work with the cruise sector, however, it didn't trade in twenty twenty and it is unlikely to be trading in twenty twenty one and may never trade again. So that's why I'm not declaring an interest. But I don't have a question at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Maxine. I have Pauline Munro.
Yeah, it's okay Fiona. I was going to wait. Sorry, I don't know why I pressed that. I was playing. I'll wait for a second and ask questions in a minute. I'll wait to hear everything first. Sorry Fiona.
Okay, Alistair, I have your hand up. I'm not sure if it's an old hand or a new hand.
It's an old hand Fiona.
Okay. Yes, if you could take it down, that would be great. Thank you. So there's no one else with their hands up for any questions on any of the projects?
Yeah, yeah.
There is now, yeah.
Sorry, I was waiting for the others, but I'll, I'll come in. Yeah, obviously it's a difficult one because you three members have declared an interest. And because we don't really have any debate in our ward, we, we've all agreed on the two projects prior. I can't see that being an issue, but it might be an issue with your award because you've got two competing projects. And I wondered if some, if an officer could explain to us what happens if we can't make a decision today? Where does it go then? So that's a question I have. But also maybe you yourself Fiona, if you're involved in one of them and Derek's involved in the other, maybe you as members could tell us a little bit about each one, why you think we should back it, if you don't mind?
Okay, I'll just answer that particular question. Yes, we have had meetings with council officers and, you know, thought long and hard about talking on the projects. And also whether we should submit something from the groups and give more background information. And I took the decision that I wouldn't speak on the project. And because particularly because I'm the Chair as well, so I wouldn't speak in it because I would naturally perhaps promote the project being a member of the group. So, so I won't speak about that project. Alistair Ryan is also a member of that group as well. So that's my position on that. And if you have any questions, the officers do know a lot about the projects. They, they could answer any questions that you do have. And but perhaps we can go to Alison and she might be able to say what would happen if we don't decide today.
Thank you Chair. I mean, certainly members in terms of the committee itself. I'll, I'll hand over to Alan in a second in terms of the timescale around the projects and the implications of a, if a decision wasn't made. In this, in the same way that you would decide in any other committee, there is the opportunity for you to vote on the projects and make a decision that way, a democratic decision as, as you normally would in, in any other committee on a, on a project. It's considering the different merits around about that. But Alan might want to come in and clarify in terms of timescales around the deliverability of the projects if a decision wasn't made today.
Yeah, I'll just elaborate on Alison's point as well, just in terms of the governance and the decision making as well. I think maybe what Maxine is alluding to was last time round, the decision-making process. We had essentially area committees making a recommendation to a cross-party working group that was convened. It was a cross-party working group that basically signed off the final grant awards based on the recommendations of area committee members. This time round, Ian and I committee in November delegated this to the area committees to make the decisions. So Alison's quite right. There is nowhere else for this to go. It's for this committee to decide. And that would necessitate a vote if necessary, as Alison rightly points out. In terms of the timetable, I've stressed this time and time again, contracts need to be awarded by the end of March. The funds need to be committed. We're now sitting on the twentieth of January. So if you don't agree today, it needs to come back to committee for, for a decision. So you potentially be looking at another special committee. And all that time, you're eating into a very short window. You're talking about tender processes, et cetera, et cetera. You're then reaching the point where you're seriously impacting on the ability to commit those contracts. And essentially what would happen then is if the funds are not committed by the end of March, the grant terms that the council have entered into with the Scottish Government, we necessitate on those funds being returned to the Scottish Government. I've seen correspondence this week from the Scottish Government chasing all thirty two local authorities for a breakdown of the projects that have been approved, because there are local authorities who are seeking additional funds. You know, there is a desire. So I think ideally we'd be seeking to reach an agreement as quickly as possible.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry interrupting. I didn't make myself clear. I meant, what would happen today if it was a draw? How do you decide? If we all, if we vote and it's a tie, how do you make the decision then? Because is it a cut of cards or how do you do it?
Whoever's in the chair at that point, we'd have a casting vote.
What, even if they've declared an interest?
I, I would move out of the chair if we come to a vote. So I will not be chairing the meeting. And I'll move Alistair Ryan and then it will be up Alistair Ryan to decide whether he wants to chair the meeting or not. If he doesn't, as the vice chair, we will then decide as a committee who will be our chair.
Oh, okay.
Caroline.
Thanks Fiona. This shouldn't be a difficult decision for us as a committee. We've got a very competent officer who's given us all the information that he's gathered together. We've had briefings. How often do we have a decision to make about spending money that we're being given? This should be a really good opportunity for us. I think it's been difficult for the three Tain members because they've all had to declare an interest. And I think you've done the right thing Fiona in saying that you don't want to speak about the project. I think that's the right decision for you to make. And we should respect that. At the end of the day, if the three of you are declaring an interest, the four of us are going to have to get on with it and make this decision. We can't put it off today. Actually, it's making Alan's job even more difficult. We're not looking a gift horse in the mouth. We don't want to lose this money because we're running out of time. For goodness sake, let's get on with it. Make a decision, get the money spent on these projects in both wards and, you know, look to the future. And I know it's difficult for the three Tain members, but actually, you know, the, the other four of us will just have to, to make a decision and look at the recommendations and decide and try and get this money spent for the good of both communities.
Okay, thank you Caroline. Pauline.
Yeah, is it okay to ask a few questions about each Fiona? Because just.
Absolutely, yeah. I would encourage, I would encourage you to ask questions, yeah.
That's good because I put like sort of pros and cons against both because they're both, you know, as you know, you live there, they're both really good. But I'll talk about the Tain Pictures. And this is just from my perspective. So I'm hoping that somebody can clarify things for me. I mean, the positives for the Tain Picture House is that it suggests that there'll be future work, you know, work for people, future opportunities and employment. The risks are, and this again is just my opinion, will they be delivered in time? Because it's, you know, it's, it's quite a big job. Do we need, I know we don't need planning permission, but do we need building warrant? Is that, sorry, is that right? Yeah. Do we need building warrant? Yeah, that's sorry. That's what I was going to ask. And or do we have building warrant, which makes it easier for us to make that decision. I'm sorry Alan to, to come in with all this just now, but I never got to read last night because I was a bit busy looking after my mother-in-law. So I never got to read everything and I've been trying this morning to catch up on everything. So this is just a few things that I wrote down. And then the Rose Gardens, I mean, we're obviously all want to see toilets up and running, of course we do. But I was, I was not questioning, but wondering, you know, the forty five and a half K for resurfacing. It to me seems a wee bit excessive, but I mean, I could be wrong. Just asking the questions. You could maybe answer them for me. Could there maybe be a cheaper alternative to that? Because it's, it's quite a big chunk of the money. And then the, the other bits, the CCTV, to me, the CCTV and the toilets being done up is just as important as the lift and the. So I'm struggling to weigh up all, you know, if we could do both, I'd be delighted with that, but we can't. So I'll wait to see what everybody else says. But it was just a few questions I was wanting to bring up because in my own mind, you know, our own toilets have been vandalised. So we know how that feels. It's horrible. You know, Maxine went and got proof and everything. We got the people involved and nothing was done. So it's a, it's a really difficult decision to make. But anyway, hopefully somebody can come in and answer some of that questions for me if you don't mind. Thank you.
Okay, Pauline, will I just take all the other questions as well, just in case they overlap? So I've got Mike with his hand up.
I think Caroline was up already before me, but.
I think that was an old hand.
Sorry, it's, it's another old hand. We're all showing our age this morning.
Okay, no problem. Right, okay. I'd just like to, to speak about the real importance, and I think we all agree in this, of having good toilets in a town or in a village. I know from experience in my own little community here, how important it is. So this project for the Rose Garden is so important for the, for the wellbeing of people coming in to Tain to do their shopping, et cetera, et cetera. And Tain is a market town really basically, and a lot of people come in from the outside. So anything that would improve that side of things, I think is so important, especially at this time when, when shopkeepers and businesses are really want to attract people into the town. And I think that's, that's so important. The question I would ask with regard to the, the market, I think it's once a month here, the farmer's market there. Because you changed the, the application with regard to getting the toilets done. You're still happy that you have enough, enough space there for continuing the, the market side of things. And so that's the only question I'd have there. With regard to the, the old picture house. Obviously, you know, folk are very, folk that are running that project, obviously are very keen on, on restoring. I would say is what they're trying to do perhaps. The, the ability to hold lots of different venues there. Things going on like probably even weddings. But there are a number of other places in the town that do provide that, that facility with regard to the town hall. And there's the Royal Hotel beside it with function rooms and, and whatever else. So in the long term, I think perhaps it'd be worth, it'd be viable. But I think the important thing at the moment is to, is to up, up the, refurbishment of the, of the Rose Garden and the toilets. I think that's so important in this climate. To get trap people in and it would be something that could happen right away. The folk would be attracted in within this year even once it's done. So that's my opinions there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Mike. Maxine.
Thank you. Yeah, so you probably said this Alan, but I didn't make a note of it. So, because in, in the actual proposals we've got that I've printed out, we're still looking for a, to be confirmed quote for the public toilets. So I'm looking and wondering how much the public toilets are on their own. So, you know, I'm wondering, do we have to decide that project or that project? Or could we say we want the public toilets to be refurbished? But we'll give some money to the picture house as well. So maybe you could answer that Alan. So what's the figure for the public toilets? You know, if we didn't agree, say the resurfacing just now, but just agreed to the public toilets and the other bits. I'm just wondering what that kind of split would look like.
Okay, I'll, I'll just work back from those questions then. So in terms of the costs of the toilets, they're estimated at thirty two thousand. That was the, the most latest cost estimate last night. It's entirely members prerogative whether you wish to pick certain items of, of the proposal. Like you say Maxine, you could go for toilets or the paths or both. I will stress that the Tain Taskforce have impressed on me that they believe the toilet refurbishment and the path go hand in glove, that they complement one another. I personally wouldn't disagree with that, you know, it's quite clear that they're part of the one, one project. The estimate, the cost estimate for the path work Pauline, yeah, you're quite right. It does maybe look a wee bit high when you first look at that. I think we have to remember it's a conservation area and what you have there is a conservation treatment. And invariably that will always increase, increase your costs. And you also have some drainage work in there as well. So you know, when you're looking at the sub-level of any, any makeup of the path there as well, it's, it's, it's probably more costly than you may experience elsewhere. So that's one of the key drivers for their statutory Tain Picture House. That's what I circulated late on yesterday was the letter of comfort. So again, no. We expect everything to be in place and that wouldn't impinge on the timetable of being able to, to get to that project.
Okay, thank you Alan. I don't have any more hands up with any more questions on the projects. Oh, Maxine, I do.
Sorry, yeah, sorry Alan, coming back.
Sorry, yeah, sorry Alan, coming back again, hogging it. So the provision of lighting, what figure was against that one?
So is this the lighting and for, for the markets, the, the-
The lighting for the community markets.
Yeah, that was eight thousand.
Right, okay, thank you. Okay, well, I, I do have a motion at the appropriate time Fiona, I'm just gonna go for it.
Okay. Alistair Ryan. Alistair, you need to take your mic off.
Sorry, I didn't actually need to claim an interest. I was seeking for guidance whether I should or not. And so I still sit that guidance.
Okay, right. Alison, would you like to?
Fiona, I would hand over to the committee clerk who, if that's okay.
Hello, I did hear that earlier and I did message Alistair Ryan, but maybe you haven't seen it Alistair. But the decision to, whether or not to declare an interest is entirely your own really. And you're under no obligation to declare an interest, even if another member feels that they had. It's really just up to yourself whether you feel that you have an interest to declare, so. Can't really say any more than that.
Can I come back in?
Yes, Alistair.
Well, I personally feel that I have no interest. Had it been that I was financially involved with the task force or any other group in the town, then I would declare an interest. But I have no financial involvement whatsoever with the task force. I just sit on it, I'm chairman of it. Like I'm chairman of many other groups within, in the town or members of it. I don't see that that should depower me or any other member similar in declaring an interest. So I'll, I'll just keep my comments fairly bland actually. This morning, we discussed these projects before. It was a great shame really that the toilets came in late on. But we weren't to foresee the vandalism that was going to be done to the toilets. And suddenly that happened a couple of months ago, our public toilets being closed. And the discussions with officers, councillors, is to refurbish the toilets and put in what we would call vandal proof. The toilets into the, into the, the Rose Gardens toilet block. And therefore, you know, when we had our previous meeting discussing the paths and the Rose Garden, and I agree with Pauline that the paths are very expensive, but unfortunately, you know, when we first built the Rose Garden, we had, everything was hanky-dory, but then there was a change in the weather pattern. And suddenly, a greater erosion started with the heavy rain and we've had to keep on repeating the paths. And it's been quite costly, A, costly getting materials in, but B, costly and volunteer time as well. The, so this project was worked at some time ago. It wasn't just because of the town centre funding, it was several years ago that it was first looked at and of course finances wouldn't permit. And then this opportunity came in and the prices were refreshed and, you know, it is expensive. But as Alan pointed out, it does include the cost of drainage, it does include the cost of aging as well. And it includes the cost of a material that will not have erosion in it in the future. And I think that's the important point. And the, the Rose Garden is one of the well-used facilities within the town centre. Every day, whether it's summer, winter, or whenever, whatever season you walk up the high street, there's always somebody in the Rose Garden. And especially in the spring and summer, a lot of people are sitting there. And, you know, we work very closely with the Tain Development Trust on, on their markets that they have been holding there, suddenly had to be cancelled because of COVID. Anyway, been very successful and it was always thought that there was need to do something better to facilitate these events and other events that may take place in the Rose Garden. And certainly with the COVID that's been on at the moment, probably more outdoor events could take place there than we could have indoor as well. So it's a project that's been worked out over a number of years. And then sadly, as I said, the vandalism of the toilets came in, so that made, made a difference to the, the total project. So that's where I stand at this moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more questions? No? Okay, so moving on, what I would propose is that as the Cromartie First members are in agreement of your projects and your projects will use up all the funding that you've been allocated, as I understand it. And that we just move that you, we approve these projects. And that you can go ahead and award the funding.
Yeah, I'd agree that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We all agree with that, yeah?
Yep.
Okay, the only concern that I might have is if, what if a project comes in lower than we thought? So you know, there are some tentative costs in there. And if Alan could advise on how you would use up the rest of the money, because what we don't want is to lose that money. We need it spent, whatever word it's in, it's got to be in Easter Ross. I think we all agree that all of-
We do have another list of projects underneath that, so we could allocate it to those.
Is that right? Can we do that Alan?
Can I just come in? Sorry Fiona, can I just come in? I'm, I think that the Everton lighting project might cost more than we expect anyway. So I am sure that we'll use the money on that and that we could add a little bit to that to use the money up if we had to. I mean, the signage and the lighting and stuff, it will be, I think, more than what we're thinking. So I think we'll be able to use the full budget that we've got left after the Invergarden project for that. I'm quite confident we'll use the money.
That's great, okay. Because I think we need that reassurance. We definitely have to have it spent in our areas. Okay, so I move then that we approve these projects. So now we come to the Tain and Easter Ross projects and we have the, the two competing projects. And as Caroline has said, it's really up to, the decision is up to the members in the Cromartie First Ward. So Maxine.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna put forward a little bit of controversial motion, hell. So I'm going to propose that we spend thirty six thousand for a lift for the Tain picture house, ignoring the ramp at the moment. And I'm going to propose that we spend the balance, which I think is around about thirty four K on the toilets section of the Rose Garden project in Tain. I accept everything you've said, that you want it all to go together, but, you know, this isn't my only way that I can think of trying to be as fair as I can. So that's my proposal, but I obviously need a second.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
I'll second it. I just want both. I think they're both as important as each other. I'm struggling to I really am struggling, sorry guys. So I would second that and then at least it seems like we're not ignoring one for the other, almost. Trying to be as fair as we can.
Okay, so at this point, I will relinquish the chair. Because I said I wouldn't take part in, in if it came to a vote.
Can I just add to the, can I, just a wee comment with regard, is that okay with regard to Maxine's proposal?
Yes.
When you mentioned that you, the, the proposal is that you'd spend thirty six K in the lift. But Alan did mention, I think in this report, that a lot of this work had to do with health and safety maybe or whatever, you know, so the ramp would be as important as the lift perhaps. Is that, is that, is that true?
I don't think, sorry, I don't think you can actually debate this after I've put a motion.
Well, I asked a question, can I?
I just thought it'd be fair to ask a question to help them.
But it's up to them where they find the other four K from, that's not our problem.
Alan, can you give any clarification?
Just to answer councillor Finlayson's point, you're quite right. The, the project lead there has said that the ramp is very important from a health and safety perspective in terms of contractors, consultants, et cetera, egress and, and from the property. So there is, there is, there is an issue there. I don't think it precludes or has an impact on the lift being installed. I think it's something that they are very keen to, to remedy. As I say, they have a nineteen twenty grant approved, which they've not drawn down the full value of the funds. So on that point, I would propose to seek to work with the project lead to look at their existing grant. They're still waiting on tender returns for that first phase of works. So there might be potential within the existing grant to, to put that ramp in, as I say, using the nineteen twenty award. So if Maxine's motion is carried, we could look at, you know, potentially looking at the scope of works with that nineteen twenty grand. And seeing if we can maybe build in the ramp if it is absolutely critical to the project moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that clarification Alan. You're on mute. You had your hand up Caroline?
I couldn't hear Fiona, what you were saying. I didn't know if you were coming to me or not, couldn't hear you. I just think that the public toilets are really important. I know how important they are here. I think it's massively important to we're going to have a massive challenge in Easter Ross, regenerating the communities that we've got after we get out of this COVID situation. I think facilities in the middle of the town with the toilets and the, the farmer's market, which has been popular. And I think all of that, I think there's, it's a pity to split the money and not complete one project. I hear what you're saying about the playhouse, Maxine, and splitting the money. But from my point of view, I think that getting the centre of the town in a position that you can welcome visitors, which you are going to be so important to the economy and be able to have functions there. And what has been applied for, for the farmer's market will be able to be used for other functions in the centre of the town. And I just think that's really important. So I would say that I would want to see the money going towards the toilets and the Rose Garden project. And say that the members would work with the, the other project to try and help them secure the money for the lift. Because I think first and foremost frontline, we need to get communities back on their feet and get people into the town. So I would propose that and I'd have to look to see if Mike's able to second me on that.
Yes, I can second you on that.
Okay, thank you. So we, we have the two different proposals. I'm going to stand down as the chair. And I'm going to hand over to my vice chair, who is Alistair Ryan. And I'll just mute my mic and allow him to take over the meeting. Alistair, could you put your camera on? Oh, you're on mute.
Yeah, my cam was not working unfortunately, so.
All right, okay. Can we just check, is that, is that allowed? Is that okay that somebody can chair the meeting without the camera on? Fiona, Alison.
I don't see why not, although it would be better if you could put this camera on, I would imagine for the recording, but I don't see why not.
I mean, that's my camera on now, but I presume you can't see me.
Yes, I'm sure, I'm sure it'll be fine. We know you're there.
Okay, right. So I'll hand over to you Alistair.
So I would like to see first that the members are content with me chairing the second part. You know, if you're standing away from the chair Fiona, our members content with me chairing. Is people hearing me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can I commit, Alistair? I don't have a problem with you chairing because you are vice chair, but and because we, we can't have a say whether or not you declare an interest, I don't think we can actually comment on whether you chair or not. If I'd have been you, I would have been declaring an interest, but that's me, my personal view. So therefore I can't, because you haven't declared an interest, I can't have an issue with you chairing it, if that makes sense.
Yes, quite, quite clear to me. So I, I think it's quite clear. We have the two motions. One from Maxine seconded by Pauline, and the other from Caroline, the amendment from Caroline seconded by Mike. Am I correct there, committee clerk Fiona?
Hello, yes, that's my understanding for the motion and amendment. I would, could I ask you to write them into the chat? Especially Maxine, I didn't quite catch all of yours, just, just to be sure I've got the wording right. Thank you.
So are you clear on the amendment from Caroline?
The amendment for Caroline, she would like to see the, the money for Cromartie First going to the, the toilets and the Rose Garden, but also do you formally want it included that you want to work with other, the other projects to work towards the lift being installed?
Yes, I think I would like that included as well Fiona, that all of us as members would help to see any, seek any further funding that we could to help, because I think it is an important project for Tain. And regardless of the fact that we are in all nice Fiona, I think it's important that we support that project in Tain. So if any of us can find any funding that would help, I think we would be happy to do that. Don't know how you want to word that, but I'm happy to have that formally included. Okay?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
So Fiona, will I leave you now to, to call for the motion and amendments?
Yes, okay. So thank you. We have a motion by councillor Smith, seconded by councillor Munro to use the thirty two thousand for the Tain picture house and the balance of around thirty four thousand to go to the toilet, toilet refurbishment only.
Yeah, except for thirty six K, sorry, it was a typo.
Sorry, around thirty six thousand for the, for the Tain picture house, okay? And I have an amendment by councillor Wilson, seconded by councillor Finlayson to see the money for Cromartie First going to the toilets and the Rose Garden as detailed in the report and to work, for members to work with other projects to help them to seek funding if possible with particular reference to the lift being installed at the picture house. Are you happy with that? Okay, and I'm not, can I just clarify that councillor Robertson, you will not be voting on this? And councillor Loudon also won't be-
That's right, I'm not, not taking any part at all.
Okay. So there was, I'll just ask your name and if you could just say motion or amendment please, that would be great. Councillor Ryan.
Amendment.
Councillor Smith. Councillor Finlayson.
Amendment.
Councillor Munro.
You're on mute Pauline.
Motion.
Councillor Wilson.
Amendment.
So we have two votes for the motion and three votes for the amendment, so the amendment is carried.
Thank you Fiona. I'll hand back to Fiona. Do you want to close the meeting Fiona?
Okay, thank you Alistair. Okay, so I think that, that's quite clear how we're going to allocate the money in Tain and Easter Ross, Alan. Is that, are you quite happy with that, what we've gone through? You're clear now and how to proceed?
Yeah, I'll proceed with the relevant grant offers and amendments to existing grant offers, what we have in place if required. So yeah, very clear. Thank you members for your time this morning.
Okay, thank you. So there's no other business on the agenda today?
Out of order.
Sorry, yeah. Thanks for letting.
Yeah, it's just to ask Alan, will the, will the project for the, the path be undertaken by Highland Council? And will that leave a balance? If the VAT is recovered?
The proposal considered by members today was inclusive of that and for the Tain task force to deliver the path element of the project. As I understand it, that's what's been approved. There may be an opportunity for the council to do that work. It is the council's asset. But I do not have the authority to commit the council to that. I am more than happy to discuss with the relevant council officers as to whether that is feasible, therefore to make the VAT available, that sum of money, circa seven thousand pounds. But as of right now, I can't give that, that commitment. I can give the commitment to progress it and discuss it.
I'm very happy that you progress it and discuss it. I wouldn't want to see any of that money lost to Tain and Easter Ross.
Absolutely, I totally agree with you Derek. I think, you know, as I said, for the Cromartie First Ward, we have to ensure that we do spend every penny of money that we are entitled to. But I think between the projects that we have put forward, that we can fulfil spending all the money. Councillor Caroline Wilson.
Thanks Chair. I think Derek has raised a very good point. I mean, in the past, we've had projects here in all nice that the council have delivered and they've saved the VAT. I mean, I think that, you know, we should be making sure that that happens. I mean, the Everton project, the council will be delivering and the lamp, all the lights and stuff, and the VAT from that will be recovered for the council. So I think you make a very, very good point Derek, which we've taken advantage of here before. And it makes the money just go that bit further. So maybe we can say to Alan, you know, is there a way that we can, you know, ensure that that gets delivered? ensure that that gets delivered this way through the council and that that VAT can be recovered for the community to use further in the project?
Thank you, Alan.
I just come back in, Chair, if that's okay. It's if that was successfully resolved and the council was in a position to deliver the path contract, that does potentially leave you with a sum of money that is not committed now. And it's where does that potential saving?
Well, could I come back in, Alan? So could then, in the spirit of what I said in my amendment then, if we were in a position that we could save that VAT through delivery in the past with the council, could we then use that money to go towards the lift? So that that's the start of it. And if there is a sum of money that they have from twenty twenty funding that could go to that, that is, that'll go a bit of a way towards delivering the lift project. So that would be a start to, you know, it'd be a smaller amount of money, Derek, for you to find for the lift, for the playhouse. So if we could use that VAT element as a start, Alan, and then along with the money it's left for last year, I think that would go away towards getting that project underway as well and leave us a smaller gap to try and find to get that delivered.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Would members be happy with that?
Delighted, yeah.
Alistair Rind, you've got your hand up. Alistair, you may be on mute, we can't hear you.
Yeah, we'll be, I'm quite sure, as the, well, officially we say about the pass, this is a specialised contractor that needs to do that work. You know, it's not the run-of-the-mill person that can do it, it's a specialised contractor. But if it can be done through the council, well, that's great, the council can get the VAT back on that.
I think, can I come back in, Alistair? I don't think we're saying that the council workers have to do the work. But if the council actually action the contract and asks somebody to come and do it, they can claim the VAT back. So if a third-party organisation come in to do the, deliver the contract because of the specialist nature of it, the council would pay the VAT and claim it back, so that the Tain task force are not paying the VAT and then are not in a position to claim it back. So that would be twenty percent of the funding would be saved towards the other project.
Yeah, I understand that and we'd be very happy in doing that. All I was pointing out, it is a specialised contractor that has, that's where the price came from, you know.
Okay, thank you, Alistair. Yeah.
Yeah, again, it just does, you know, I don't want, I don't want to take part in the decision as to what happens to the VAT if we do get it back. So I'll again switch my camera off and switch my mic off and let you take that decision without me.
Okay, thanks, Derek. Alan, can I just ask how you feel about that? Are you quite comfortable?
So my take on that discussion there is that any under spend or savings realised with any of the projects is redirected to the picture house project. And it's for me to work with the project lead there to look at how best they can deliver the project as approved and what we're seeking to do just now. So as I say, they're currently out of tender for the phase one element. We don't know what those tender returns are going to look like, so we might be able to, you know, if we take any under spends, as I say just now, and look at the project and its totality, deliver as much as we can with available funds.
Okay, thank you, Alan. That's very reassuring, I think, for all the members. And I think that that looks like a good way forward. Is everyone quite happy now that we proceed that way? Okay, I think we've got agreement from everyone. And that brings us to the end of the committee and our business today. So thank you, all of you, for attending. And we're just delighted to have some money to spend in our wards. And we look forward to seeing some sort of transformation and we look forward to seeing more money, again, coming forward from the Scottish government so that we can do more work. We really desperately do need to do that to help our businesses in our towns. Okay, so thank you to all of you for coming along and to the officers for their support and their guidance during the meeting.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.
Bye.
Bye, bye.